All right. Good evening to you all and welcome on a snowy evening to the Monday, January 14th, 2019, meeting of Falls Church City Council. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Thank you again for coming out. Before we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, I wonder if our children in the room would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you guys like to do that? Maybe come forward and lead us with the pledge. Why don't you guys come forward and you guys can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, okay?
I'm just way by the microphone.
All right. Let's do it. Whenever you guys are ready.
Okay. Who's on the mic?
I'm not going. No, you're the tallest.
I'm not going. I can't wait. Okay. Fine.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job. Thank you all. Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Here, sorry.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Happy 2019. Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. All right. Before we get started, do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. All right. Our first order of business is a proclamation regarding Martin Luther King Day and relating to service as well in our community, and I think Ms. Hardy is going to do the honors.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the City of Falls Church is a welcoming and respectful place for people of all faiths, all races, all cultures, all sexual orientations, and all backgrounds, and whereas the City Council wishes to reaffirm the longstanding community values of equality, inclusion, and diversity, and whereas in numerous proclamations in support of fair housing, disability rights, immigrant rights, and the rights of the LGBT community, the City Council has always taken a strong stand in opposition to discrimination against any of the residents of the City of Falls Church, and whereas the City Council encourages positive action to combat intolerance, and whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?", and whereas each year on Martin Luther King Jr. holiday, Americans across the country answer that question by coming together to serve their neighbors and communities, and whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how Falls Church meets challenges, and whereas the Falls Church City Council believes that ordinary citizens, armed with compassion and the willingness to serve, can come together to change the world and pursue the nation's highest ideals.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby recognize the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday on January 21st, 2019, as City of Falls Church Day of Service, and encourage all citizens to observe this day with appropriate civic, community, and service projects in honor of Dr. King, and to affirm our city's commitment to the values of equality, inclusion, and diversity.
All right. Do we have, I understand we might have some children coming up? Tell us about what's going on over at TJ and elsewhere. Maybe Give Day. Welcome to you guys.
Thank you.
We are Fifth Gave, Give Day ambassadors from Thomas Jefferson Elementary. I'm Seth.
I'm Brayden.
I'm Jack.
I'm Kaylin.
I'm Catherine.
I'm Addie Rose.
I'm Hannah.
I'm Ashoke.
And I'm Brooks.
So, Give Day stands for Get Involved, Value Everyone. So, Give Day is on January, Monday, January 21st, and it's a day for service.
For Give Day, we are supporting food for others, which helps kids who don't have enough food to eat on the weekends, and we're making power packs to give to food for others so they can give it to the people who don't have enough food. The next one is the Arlington Animal Welfare League, and we'll be making chew toys for dogs. Finally, the last thing we're raising money for is the California Wildfire Recovery Efforts, and parents and other adults can give blood.
The TJ gym will be set up with many assembly lines to pack up food and supplies for food for others. Our goal is to pack 1,500 power packs for families at Timberland Elementary. In the cafeteria, we are going to make chew toys for dogs. There will also be a bake sale where we use all the money raised to donate to California Wildfires Recovery. Parents can donate blood out of Bloodmobile in the parking lot at TJ by Seaton Lane.
So, we'd like to share our Give Day song with you.
All right.
Falls Church. I've got something to say, I said, Falls Church. What's a help, there's no way, I said, Falls Church. It's a service day for every boy and girl can't help out. Falls Church, we need some power packs and supplies, I said, Falls Church. Also donate some blood, look around, and I'm sure you will find many things that you can donate. It's fun to be a part of the G-I-V-E. It's fun to be a part of G-I-V-E. You'll be helping out kids from Falls Church, you're out west. You can do it with all your friends. It's fun to be a part of G-I-V-E. It's fun to be a part of G-I-V-E. You'll be helping out kids from Falls Church, you're out west. You can do it with all your friends.
All right. Woo! Great job, guys. Come on. Why don't you all come forward? We can give you our hearty thanks and maybe a pen as well. How about that?
Yeah, we have one more speaker.
Oh, one more speaker? All right.
So, what you guys can do is donate food items to our PTA, the Falls Church Elementary PTA, to support this project. We need cereal, oatmeal, granola bars, Goldfish, milk or juice boxes, stuff like that, items that can be easily microwaved or something to make food so that you can have a meal, so that people can have a meal. You can come give blood. The Bloodmobile will be there between 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for people who need extra blood, especially cancer, people with cancer. And you can visit, and we will be having a bake sale at our school from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, guys. Why don't you come on forward? We'll get a picture maybe with you all, and we can give you our congratulations and a pen. How about that?
You all can come up for the photo. Oh, go back for the photo. Get there and gather in front of Council. Once we get all the handshakes.
Nice work. Thank you for your fine efforts, and also thank you to Councilperson Hardy for helping organize our service time here on Council. So, that's much appreciated as well.
Just a quick comment, Mayor.
Yes, of course you can.
I believe Give Day is open to all elementary families. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, for anyone out swatching, hopefully you can join the day of MLK Day or be able to donate in advance, and encourage everyone who's not necessarily an elementary family to participate in a day of service by looking for a community service project around the neighborhood. Thank you. I think we have one more speaker who might want to receive the proclamation. Mr. Henderson? I thought I saw him. Do you want to come up now, or?
All right. Come on down.
Thank you.
Got you listed as a speaker, but we'll go ahead and take you now. We've got your flyer as well, but tell us all about what's going on on MLK Day.
Well, I'm Ed Henderson, Tennerhill Heritage Foundation founder, and this is the third year that we're doing the MLK March. It's a short march, but it's symbolic that we're going from the Tennerhill Civil Rights Monument, and we have a very rich civil rights history here in Falls Church. But one of the things that I'd like to share with you, we got new bookshelves, and I was looking through some stuff that was, this was rolled up, and this map here shows how in 1922, when they cut Lee Highway, and we've never really called it Lee Highway here in Falls Church, it's always been Washington Street, but in the 1920s, to honor Robert E. Lee, there was a group of people that wanted to create a national highway in honor of Confederate General Commander Robert E. Lee. And here in Falls Church, it just so happens that they said they wanted to straighten out the road, but in order to straighten it out, they took by eminent domain land from African-American landowners to create this one section here. And when I look at this map, I saw that you see the road, but you also see the plaques, and on either side was the names of African-American landowners, Cato Adams, Betty Bryce, William Henderson, E.B. Henderson, Fannie Richardson. And all of this was taken, this land was taken from African-Americans, and this is the route that we take from the monument to the church. And therefore, when we do our march this year, we will recognize and honor these people whose land was taken in order to create this memorial to Robert E. Lee. Who should we honor? Should we honor Robert E. Lee? A lot of people are saying we're going to stop honoring Confederate heroes. These people gave their substance so that this road could be built. We're going to honor them, okay? When we honor Martin Luther King, and we're going to honor them, and we're not going to honor Robert E. Lee. Now, this year, we said that, okay, I understand, there's money involved in order to put on the march, and there's a process to being able to shut down a major thoroughfare, even for 30 minutes, which is all it would take for us to walk from the monument three blocks to the church. So, I'm hoping that next year, we will do the right thing, and we will be able to walk in the street from the monument to the church on the land that was taken by African-Americans to create this road. And so, this is going to take place next Monday, January 21st. We're gathering at 12:30. We're going to step off at 1:00. We should get to the church by 1:30, where there'll be a program put on by the Social Justice Committee of Falls Church and Vicinity, which is an organization under the auspices of Tennerhill, but also includes many houses of faith, including the Bahais, the Rodev Shalom Temple, the Jewish Temple, many of the churches, traditional and African-American churches. And we're going to have a program. Just got word that Congressman Byer will be there, and I'm hoping he'll say a few words on the shutdown and the agenda for the things he'd like to see in this session of Congress. And then there will be a peace circle. There'll be songs, there'll be tributes, there'll be a youth group that is going to recite many of the quotations that you see around the Martin Luther King Monument in Washington, D.C. And so, I think it's going to be a great program. It's going to last from 1:30 to 3:30, and I know there's some, some of you all will have to sneak away in order to be at another commitment at 3:00. But be that as it may, I hope to see everybody there. I think it'll be a good day. I hope it'll be a good day. You never know with this weather, do we? Well, and I want to thank you all. You know, I really enjoy being able to do what we do here in Falls Church because of you guys and your cooperation that you give us to do what we do. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to a fine event. Vice Mayor Connolly, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah. Mr. Henderson, I just want to thank you for calling the history out and teaching us something every time you're here, and for organizing this event, which I think is a significant asset and benefit in our community. So, thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
So, just, Mr. Mayor, very quickly, I would highly recommend folks, for the reasons that Ed has just mentioned, but I will say that the program that Ed put together last year at the Episcopal Church, if I recall, was one of the most meaningful that I've attended in many years. It's, you learn some things that you never knew before, so I highly recommend both the march and especially the program afterwards. Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much. See you next Monday.
Oh, well, I mean, the proclamation is not for all citizens of Falls Church, just not just for me.
We could present it maybe, or give it to you at the day, at the...
Present it at the church.
All right.
I think that would be better.
Okay.
You know, pull that forward.
All right. Sounds good. We'll see you next Monday. Thanks again. All right. Our next item on the agenda is the annual report of the Library Board of Trustees. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of Council, I'm Jenny Carroll, the library director, and I'm here to present the library annual report for fiscal year 2018. Chet DeLong is also here with me. He is the vice chair. And in case you didn't know, Branley Giannand, our library board chair, resigned in December of 2018, sold his house, and moved to Oklahoma, where he is working for the Choctaw Nation. So, we also thank you, thank him for over 20 years of service to the library board and the library as well. I'd also like to extend our gratitude to Ed Rose for his 21 years of service to the library as a trustee. So, there are a couple of highlights for the annual report. Once again, this year, we are a four-star library, and we are one of two libraries in Virginia that received this distinction. The other one is Loudoun County. And this is our 11th year in a row. So, we've been a star library for all 11 years that the Library Journal has been doing this, America's Star Libraries. And I would like to thank the staff, the Board of Trustees, and of course, our wonderful patrons who continue to make us a four-star library. So, we are continuing to provide excellent programs and services that are well-intended, including partnering with other departments and entities within the cities. For example, we did Read and Roll again this year, which happened during the summer, and we partnered with the police department and the school system to provide a, it was actually the Swap Mobile that went out with us, and we went to several sites within the city and provided free books and sign up to our summer reading program. Also, VIPIS, the Village Preservation and Improvement Society, continues to work with us on providing thermal cameras, and I think Dan Z was in our photo that went out to the city. And we're also doing things like Touch a Truck, which kids get to come to the library and look at all of the vehicles that we have, and we work with the Department of Public Works, the fire department, and the police department as well to provide that. Just to point out a couple of highlights around circulation, I've been, since we're moving eventually, I've been going through all of the papers that are in my office, and I found a sheet that one of the former library director, Dean Zirkson, had done in 1991, and she had compiled some information about the changes in circulation and in the number of borrowers, and along with some other information, but I just thought it would be interesting for you all to hear as well. So, circulation in 1971 of items was a little over 107,000 items, and then in 1991, it was about a little over 285,000 items, and in 2018, it was 476,000 items, a little over that. So, we've just been increasing every year in the amount of items that get checked out from our library, and we also have been increasing the number of people who have registered to borrow items from the library as well. In 1971, it was a paltry 5,515 people, and then in 1991, we rose to a little over 12,000, and in 2018, we broke 30,000 registered borrowers for the library. So, our library continues to be popular and well-used. Kim and I will talk about the renovation and expansion. There's a little portion of that in the library annual report. Staff and patrons are excited about the project, and we look forward to opening our new building in 2020, and I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thank you much. We appreciate all your good work, and are there any questions at this point? Ms. Hardy, then Vice Mayor Connolly?
Great. Thank you, Ms. Carroll. Congratulations on 11 years in a row. One of the things I noted in your annual report was around kind of new services and checking out kind of objects.
Yep.
I've checked out the thermal cameras myself, and I noticed that you have other things in there, like nature backpacks, gardening kits.
We do.
One thing that I mentioned, I think might have been to a different staff member, was around the idea of do-it-yourself trash pickup kits. So, I often hear from like Girl Scout troops or Boy Scout troops that they love to actually help pick up trash, or they're looking for service activities.
Okay.
So, in the vein of kind of service events, we just talked about MLK, a day of service. Instead of waiting for the twice-a-year kind of trash pickup programs that we have around the city, I wonder if we could put together like a trash pickup kit that could be available that people could get gloves and bags and those little grabbers, which are really popular with kids, mine included, to do their own kind of day of trash pickup.
Okay.
Somebody could check out. Just a suggestion, maybe something after renovation, because I know you guys probably don't want more objects to check out right now.
Yes, we are trying to pare down in preparation for the move, but our 3D object collections have been very popular, and so our circulation supervisor, Bellet Rippey, has really been on the forefront of continuing to provide new and different objects for people to check out, and so we welcome the suggestion. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Connolly?
This is just a simple one that you will know the answer to quickly. The items borrowed, 476,669 items, does that count the online items as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And that's, so, all of our downloadables have remained about the same. Last year, it was about 16%. No, I'm sorry, apologies. Last year was about 14% of all checked-out items. This year, it's about 16%, so it hasn't changed that much. And then eBooks as a portion of that went from 6.5% to 7.5%. Within the eBooks and e-audiobooks that we provide through Overdrive, the number of checkouts sort of exploded, so that's the 83%. So, within, you know, from last year to this year, Overdrive, we've just seen a lot more checkouts happen within that service.
All right. Well, Ms. Liptonhouse?
Thank you. Jenny, it's been fantastic working with you and the board as liaison. I truly have enjoyed it, and you guys have done a fantastic job. Not that awards are everything for a library, and I think it's fantastic that you guys have maintained that for 11 years, but given the disruption that we're expecting with the renovation, as well as some of the numbers that you're seeing, is there anything that Council needs to be cognizant of in terms of supporting you all to make sure that you maintain the same level of services and programs in the interim so we can continue to remain a star library? Anything you want to point out in particular?
I think continuing to support us and also with the new building, making sure that we can provide the building that the community needs and deserves would be important. We are going to be sort of bulking up our e-resources during the time that we're in the temporary location, so there might be a change in terms of where money gets spent within the budget. So, you might see a little bit of a change in that.
I would just say, if there's anything you think that has served as kind of the recipe for keeping us as a star library that may be at jeopardy during the renovation, please let us know.
Okay. I will.
All right. Well, with that, we thank you for this portion of the presentation. I don't know if you're going to provide the update, or Kim, or...
Kim and I will.
All right. Well, let's move on to that portion if we can. Welcome, Kim.
I did change a little bit. I just wanted to kind of kick this off a little bit and give you guys a brief update of what's happening with the library and staff and public works. So, I think everyone knows that Kim Callahan has been a real champion on this project, and she will be leaving us soon. February 13th is her last day, and she's done an outstanding job, not just on the library, but she's also managed the Big Chimney Park, Downtown Plaza, our stormwater. I know she's tired of reviewing stormwater and grading plans, but we're going to miss her, and I just wanted to let Council know what a great job she's done and that we're going to take care of Jenny. So, this is the other piece of it, is there shouldn't be any laps or hiccups in the project. We have taken a consultant and hired a consultant. They're an owner's rep, and so the owner's rep, sitting over here, Joel. Joel Timmons, who is with Markham, and they will be taking over Jim, or, sorry, Kim's role. And so, in doing so, I think this is still going to be a successful project, and this may be the last time you get to see Kim up here. But, thank you, Kim. Thanks, Jenny.
Before we leave, Mike, so you had mentioned Markham, Markon will be taking over her role. Let me just ask you how the cost compares? In other words, we've got, I believe, a part-time person, maybe you're full-time, but I thought maybe part-time. How does that compare financially with hiring a company to do that role?
So, the way we establish the budget, we set aside staff allocation for charging against CIP projects, and so we'll use part of that budget to actually offset some of that.
What's cheaper? Is it a FTE, you know, some kind of employee of the city, or hiring outside consultant?
It's really hard to distinguish which one is better as far as financially. I can tell you that we have a purchase order that's going to get us through the pre-construction phase, which is going to be really the meat of this project, and so with that, I think we've got enough in the budget right now, and Kim is very good at establishing this budget. We have enough where her staff time, everyone that's in, that touches this project, and I'm not sure if you charge to it, but everyone in public works, we have allocations, and so those allocations, if I spend time on it, then I charge against it, it comes out of that budget. And so, depending on how much time each individual in the city actually spends on that, then that money comes out of the budget. So, what we have with Markon is virtually the same thing. He has a group. It's not just Joel. He has other schedulers and estimators in the company, which will be charged, and we have an established state contract, which Markon is part of, and so we're actually writing this contract. They have very good rates. I'm not sure what his multiplier is. I don't have all that information in front of me. I wasn't actually prepared to talk budget yet, but it should not impact the budget any more than what it is right now on the library.
I guess I would just say for, in going forward, that we ought to consider those things, because maybe hiring a FTE is better because you get more use out of someone than hiring a outside consultant. I don't know the answer, but I know enough to ask the question, and probably ask the city manager to give some thought to that as well, the most efficient way to use city resources.
Right.
All right. Maybe that's all I got.
We have two open positions right now. If you know anyone, please send it to me.
All right. Well, I'll tell you, I mean, that's another story, and we want to make sure we retain high-quality city employees, and I think that's all of us in Council need to be giving some thought to that. some thought to that. So I think that's maybe for a different day, but it's certainly in our minds as well.
Yes. That is my mission this year as well.
All right. Sounds good. So what next? Is Ms. Callahan coming up, or what are we doing next?
She knows everything about the library right now, yes.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Okay. So Jenny and I are here tonight to present the designs for the library project. Our goal here tonight is to hear your feedback on the design so that we can make any necessary tweaks or changes and present those tweaks and changes to the architect as part of our next round of design comments. So right now, what you're looking at is the schematic design set, and we thought we would start with the interior and then work towards the exterior. So maybe if you could zoom in a little bit, Cindy, just to the layout is the important part of that. Keep going down. Yeah. We'll start at the entrance where the portico is. So this is the top level of the building, and as you walk in, you'll see the covered portico, and then you go into the vestibule, and then to the left, that orange block of space is where we're thinking could be a top-level stroller area, stroller parking area for approximately six strollers. To the right, you'll see the two blue boxes in the circulation staff office, and that is for book returns, for people to be able to return their books from the outside of the library versus going in. And if you go into the vestibule to the left hand, or once you pass through the vestibule, you'll go into the main doorway to the library. And to the left, you'll see the elevator and then the open stairway. That's a stairway with three large windows that face out towards Cherry Hill Park that should be able to bring some lighting, more light into the library. And then the white shapes that you see are supposed to be furniture. Now, we haven't selected the actual furniture, but that's just to show that is where seating groups and seating areas can be. So we see a little seating area there. And then right next to that seating area is what Jenny refers to, I think, is the quickpicks, the new books, the DVDs, the things that people just want to come in and get and leave. And adjacent to that is the service point. So we've, because all of the adult services are on the top floor, we have a service point that's going to be circulation and adult services. So instead of a separate reference desk, they'll all be on at one point. So there's space for potentially four staff members. I know we had envisioned two potentially, and then a floater space of a third person in case, in times where it's busy, they could have a third person man the desk. And then that fourth station would be for people who want to maybe print out something that they were working on with the computer. As the computer stations are to the right of the service point, that area with, I think, in this, we had eight computer stations, but in, one of the comments we heard from staff was that they really wanted to keep 10, so we're going to be adding two more back in with the design development phase. And within that main purple section is just where all the stacks are, the nonfiction, the fiction area, all the adult, all the adult books. And in the new section of the library, you'll see, go down, yep, you'll see seating around the edges by the windows. And I think the important thing to point out in the new section is where the windows are on the current exterior wall of the library, those will be the entry points from the old portion of the building to the new portion of the building. And we're planning to keep that exposed brick on the outside as kind of a design feature for the new part of the building. And then as you move up, you'll notice we've added, the two orange areas are the two additional family restrooms, so that they'll be adjacent, or right across the hallway from the existing bathroom. So we wanted to create sort of that corridor for the restrooms. Behind the existing restrooms is Jenny's office, and that is really going to stay the same. Where the current conference room is, the adult staff will be located there, that will be their office area. Adjacent to the adult staff is, where the children's area currently is, will now be divided up into three separate pieces. For the adult section, we have the historical collection, and then an adult reading room where that existing bow window is. And then adjacent to the adult reading room will be a small meeting room that we're hoping could be flexible, could be used for programming space. And when it's not used for programming space, it could be maybe used for people to study in, or just another space for people to read and hang out. Now, if we go to the next floor, the lower level, this is the children's section.
Can we start at the new, or...
We can start coming down the elevators and the stairway.
And just to be clear, it's children's and teens, so...
Youth services.
So it's youth services in total.
And where we thought the best place for storage parking was a big issue as we went through the design process, it can actually be under that stairway. So there's a room for about 13 large strollers under the stairway. And then within the elevator, I know it was a question that was asked before, is how large is the elevator? It can accommodate about three large-scale strollers comfortably. You could probably squeeze a fourth in there, and then also depending on how big the strollers are, but three like Bob-type strollers would fit in there. And then we have the family restrooms adjacent to the stroller. And then that kind of blank box down below the family restrooms, that's just empty space. We're not, that's right under the portico, and that may have waterproofing issues, and it was a space that we didn't think we necessarily needed to use or wanted to use, because it created kind of a dark corridor back there. So we're not actually going to build out that space. That's just kind of the foundation there. But adjacent to the family room is the large meeting room, which is where storytime would be and other children's programming activities. We're planning for a sink in there and a storage closet, and then two means of ingress and egress out of the room to help kind of circulation during story hour. To the right of the meeting room, we have the early literacy area. And I did want to point out that, based on our discussions through schematic design, that corner where the playtable is, that's being reworked a little bit so that we can get that stacked seating in that corner, kind of have an L-shaped tiered seating, similar to what they have now by the bow window, so that we can kind of recreate that feature that everybody likes so much. That's not reflected here, but that was one of the comments, and that will be included in the, that is included in the latest design. So this area is where all the lower picture book shelves would be, and this is where most of the light is going to come in from the outside. And we will be removing a portion of the existing wall between the old section and the new section. So right where that green bookcase is, yeah, we'll be, we'll have to remove a portion of that wall and support it structurally, but we thought it was important to have that area open so that light can come into the building. As you move up, the, it's just more children's books, the early readers and the chapter books. And then the difference, another change that we made is the service point. The service point, the staff didn't like being in the center of the room, so we're going to shift it to where it says fiction right outside the meeting room, so they can have their backs to the wall and look out in front of them for the service point. And that's also reflected in our, that will also be reflected in the newer design. As you move up, you'll notice the teen collection that is outside of the actual teen room, which is that kind of teal color to the left, because the thought was that people other than teens want to access the teen collection and read those books. And then beyond the teen rooms, we have meeting room areas that, two small meeting room areas that we thought could be used for study rooms or group projects or something, or, you know, meetings that kids may need to have. And where the old historical collection used to be is where the youth staff offices will now be located. And then the kind of the rest of the building will really remain unchanged, kind of the old staff area. And I forgot to mention, if you scroll all the way down, you'll notice that white square in the children's collection, that is the second means of egress from the building at grade. So that, right now, we're programming it as an emergency egress only, but we're designing it so that it can be flexible, and it could be used in the future if necessary as a means of, you know, ingress and egress if we thought we needed a second entrance on that bottom floor. So, are there any questions on the interior before we move to the exterior?
Any questions on the interior before we move to the, yes, Ms.?
Great. Thank you. I ask this because when looking at high school designs, this came up. Any thoughts on gender-neutral bathrooms?
Those, they're just family restrooms.
On the upper floors, I saw that they were designated as men/women.
Well, those are existing, so we're just keeping them as existing men and women. And then the other two bathrooms on the upper level are gender-neutral bathrooms. The, yeah, those two are, again, just family restrooms.
Maybe it's just a labeling issue, something that we can be thinking about, is citywide policy, whether we'd be supportive of just gender-neutral bathrooms rather than designated them.
You know, might have, I haven't been in the men's room, but it may have more to do with the type of fixtures that are in there. It's not in our budget to redo the existing bathrooms. If we do have money to redo the existing bathrooms, that's something we could certainly explore, but there, there's several stalls. It's not just a one-person bathroom. So there's, what, two stalls in the women's room?
So the men's room has a urinal and a stall, and the women's room has three stalls.
I think it would probably take some reworking to make them both gender-neutral.
Yes. It hasn't come up, I think, before, so it's, I realize I'm introducing something new, but again, just something to think about more from a social equity perspective. Thanks.
Ms. Lipton-House?
Thank you. Something to consider, and I'm not sure if we discussed this or not, maybe it was discussed, and I just missed it. But thinking about access from the top floor down to the bottom, because that additional ingress/egress is going to be emergency-only now, I'm just thinking about flow from walking in through the vestibule, if you're parking a stroller, how you want to get downstairs, and then how that flows into the rest of the basement, and thinking about, I shouldn't say the basement, I should say the bottom floor, thinking about flipping the entrance to the stairs, and even potentially where the location of the elevator is. Going into the bottom, if you just think about the amount of traffic that you would get going downstairs, coming out on the upside, unless I'm reading that incorrectly, so you're coming down the stairs, your exit is actually at the top where your cursor is, is that correct?
That's where you're coming down.
You come down, and then you would go back up. Just thinking about the flow coming in on that side, if you were to flip it, so when you actually enter the stairs on the top level, coming down closer to where there's a little bit more of a common area, so you don't get jammed up into the corner there.
So go back up to the top floor?
Essentially, just flipping it, yeah.
We can look at that. I don't know if there was a specific reason they did that, but I don't see it being...
I wouldn't be as concerned if the primary entrance for the children's floor was going to be where that emergency-only exit is, but I just think about the number of people that are going to be coming down that stairs, and if everybody's fed into that corner, if you look at the way that the collection is set up, and if you also think about a larger event in that meeting room, feeding everybody down into that corner...
Sure.
...may just create a, a point, so...
Kind of funnel them from the stairs into that meeting room?
Yeah.
It's a shorter path.
Exactly. Yeah, it just seems like it might be easier for flow, but something to look at, I don't know. If it costs a bunch more, I say forget it.
I don't, I don't, I mean, that's new. That's new space, so you can kind of reconfigure it.
Just something to consider. I don't know if we had talked about that yet, so...
Other already? Eric?
It just reminded me about strollers. So on the days that I do visit the library, I know that stroller parking is at a premium, and it's quite popular. I think you said there were six on the first floor, and it was like 13, maybe?
13 under the stairs, yeah.
How does that compare to what we get? Because I know they're normally just all along the...
So on the days where I've seen the most people in the library, so 200-plus people for storytime, I counted the number of strollers, and it was 20. But we are, with having a new building and changing the structure and that we have a meeting room, we will change how we deliver programs. So we will probably no longer have 200-plus storytimes.
The other thought was if there's so many strollers that under the stairs gets filled up, that meeting room is large enough where you could bring your stroller into the, into the meeting room. There's plenty of space there.
All right. Other comments about the inside of the building? I have one or two. One, particularly in the downstairs with the meeting room, I wonder if you all have considered or would consider having some kind of sliding doors, so that, for example, like if you look, that room probably is not going to be used most of the time, that'd be my hunch. Most meeting rooms are not used. But if you have a story hour and you can open those walls up, you might have the ability for kids to spread out, for, you know, parents or nannies, whoever, to sit back and let the kids be up front. But I think it would give you more flexibility, particularly on that sidewalk, not necessarily that one, the other one.
The one facing the children's, yeah.
If you were intending to have story hour and the like there, to be able to open that up, slide the doors in certain times of the day, and then if you need a meeting, which probably is only going to be a few hours a day, I would guess, that you'd be able to use that more efficiently the rest of the time. So that would be a thought.
So thank you for noticing that. We actually noticed it too. And I've been, we had been talking...
I noticed it first.
We had been talking with Youth Services about making that lower door like a barn door, so where it slides open, and potentially using that conference, that meeting room for more things. So like currently, after storytime, I don't know how many of you have been to storytime, but after storytime, we bring out the Early Literacy Center, also known as the Toys. And people stay and linger for probably about another 45 minutes to an hour in that space. And we had thought about, we could do sort of the same thing after the last storytime of the day, and just open that space up, and it could be a playtime. We could also do it at other hours of the day as well. So we've talked about that and considered that. I would say, I anticipate that meeting room actually getting a lot of use. We currently only have one conference room where we do all of our programming, and there are times when we have multiple programs in a day, so I would anticipate that we would make the most of it.
I mean, I would imagine you will as well, but now you're going to have a meeting room up top, you have an adult reading room. I mean, it seems to me you have much more closed-in spaces, and so, to my mind, I think efficient use of space would at least, if you have the walls, you can lean up all the time if you actually have meetings continually, which I doubt you're going to have. But the idea of being able to flex space, I think, is efficient, especially in, for the future. So anyway, that's one thought. The second thought is about natural light, and I know you have windows, obviously have windows. Any provision for skylights of any kind to allow natural light from above?
We talked about, not necessarily a skylight, but those...
Tubes.
Tubes, yeah, the solar tubes.
Yep.
To get light into that central corridor there. So yes, that's something we're looking at.
I mean, I would recommend doing that, and even if you can, bring it down to the ground floor.
Yeah.
Like some kind of solar tube to bring some natural light, because, I mean, it's sort of like a basement in some ways, even though it has some natural light. I think, to me, I'm a big fan of natural light, and I think it would be great if you could find a way to accommodate a little bit more natural light in the, particularly the lower portion of the building.
Yep.
Okay. That's all I've got. Anybody else have any, Vice Mayor Connolly?
Along the lines of natural light, the area on the lower level where the teen room is, teen collection, the small meeting room, that doesn't look like it has any windows. So that would be a...
No, it's buried there.
And I'm just wondering if you had thought about glass walls or other open windows? I know that would add to the budget, of course.
Right, yes.
But, but a way to have some windows to bring light into those rooms as well.
We were thinking about, as the teen room faces, the purple section where the double doors are currently shown, Cindy. Making, making these, I don't know, the glass doors, because we want people to be able to see into that teen room, right? We don't want to, we don't want to close it, close it off. And then maybe, and, yeah, trying to incorporate some glass onto the, to the other, to the other walls, but we don't, we hadn't planned on kind of digging out a window well at this point.
And we've also talked to Youth Services staff about the potential of some glass in those small meeting rooms and in the youth office on that side and the front side, so that staff can see out when they're in that office.
It sounds like your stairwell had some windows on it, looking at the exterior, but as much light as you can throw in there, I think, would be helpful as well. All right. Any other comments on the interior? If not, why don't we move to the...
Okay. And if we could go to the updated site plan? So the, oh, okay, we can actually start at the elevations, that's fine. This is a corner, perspective, looking at the corner of the building, the main entrance. Brick and a lot of arched windows, trying to maintain that, the three arches, that's kind of a symbol of the library that's on all of their stationery and...
It's our logo.
Their logo, yeah. I couldn't, sorry, their logo. We're really trying to maintain that. We did go to the AAB to get some initial feedback on their thoughts on the elevations, and their comments were that they liked the corner entrance, but they thought it needed to be more prominent, they thought it needed to be taller, and they wanted us to, they wanted the architect to look at a way to make it stand out a little bit more. And then if we, their other comment was, if you could scroll down to the next slide, along the North Virginia, they liked, sorry, I should mention, the gray is the existing building, the red is the addition. The AAB really liked the proportion and the massing of the three windows along Park Avenue there that will be bringing light into the top floor and kind of down into that stairwell, so that's where that open stairwell is. And then next to that is the, where the elevator will be, that's why we've got a blank wall there, but that's where we see the name of the library going. It's also a potential for maybe public art in the future, it would be a nice wall, but they really like the proportion of the Park Avenue side. And then if we keep going down, oh, this is a view from the alleyway side, so again, you can see what we're adding versus what the existing building is, and how it kind of, they tie in nicely together and blend well, the old with the new. Keep going down. This is where the AAB wanted us to look a little bit harder at, they liked the section where the rectangular windows are, the two-story section there, but what they thought needed some work were the three art, were the section with the three arched windows. They wanted us to bring the roof line up and look at the proportion of those arched windows to make it more similar to the Battle of Park Avenue, and then again, making that corner entrance a little bit taller and more prominent. So those are the things that we're looking at as we're continuing to move forward with this design, and as we have updated designs, we'll bring them to the AAB to continue to get their feedback. So you can keep going down. And then that's just another elevation view. And then if we could go to the site plan, this is a little bit different. Oh, it's going to be hard to read, okay. You don't really need to see the images as much as the site plan drawing itself. If you could scroll down. This is an updated version of what's included in your packet. I got the design development submission at the end. See you, close your business Thursday, so it wasn't in time to include it in your packet. But I know that this, the site plan and the sidewalks is, has been a concern, so I wanted to make sure that you had the most updated designs, because it took a lot of work to, a lot of tweaking to get everything that we needed in that space. So this is the corner of Park Avenue in North Virginia, and then I may just walk over if I could.
Can you give her a microphone?
Okay. So the existing light pole is this black dot right there, and it's about 12 feet from the stairway. So if you zoom out a little bit, yeah.
This is the existing power pole?
The existing power pole. So this is the corner entrance here, this is the portico, and then the entrance to the main building. So we have a set of stairs, as you know, the first floor elevation of the library is much higher than the street elevation, so it was tricky to get the grades to work out around here. So we do have stairs coming up from North Virginia Avenue, and then from Park Avenue, you'll come out, but we bumped out the curb, so there's about 22 feet from the steps to the back of curb. So that's a pretty, a pretty wide space. And then again, from the steps to the curb here is about 22 feet, but you've got about 12 feet between the pole and the staircase. Right now, it's not in the budget, the library budget, to underground service at this corner. What we can do is ask Dominion to move the power pole over to the edge, so it's kind of out of the way until we get the project going to underground the utility service along Park Avenue. But right now, this area here is a planter area, so it's kind of tucked in behind the planter area. So even where it is now, it's not, if you're going up and down Park Avenue, it's not really in the way as it is now, where it's kind of right smack dab in the middle of the traffic, of the pedestrian traffic. As we move down North Virginia Avenue, we have the planters, and then the streetscape, we have about eight feet between the building and the planter area, and then we have our streetscape standard planters with the flush curb around the planter area. And we would like to maintain that parking along North Virginia Avenue. Something that came up during the Planning Commission and the BZA hearings was that they wanted us to look at maybe getting rid of that park, parking along Park Avenue in order to provide a wider streetscape. I know the library board thinks it's important to maintain that parking, so that's something we're going to have to work through as we go through the site plan process. Right now, the streetscape is about fourteen, is 14 feet from the back of curb to the face of the building, so it's about two feet short of what's shown in the streetscape standards. So the question is, do we get rid of three parking spaces for two additional feet along the streetscape? We'll try to work that out with planning as we go through the process. And then along Park Avenue, we have our ADA accessible parking spaces up at those two that are labeled. We can't really put the ADA spaces in the parking lot, the grade there is just too steep to bring you around the corner. So we will be keeping them on the street and making a flush curb at that point to make sure to get people onto the sidewalk. And then there's a ramp that comes up from here to get you up into the, into the vestibule. And then we have planters here, and then another planter north of the site, and then this is another landscaped area, the existing landscaped area adjacent to the building. And we have benches and some trash receptacle shown on Park Avenue as well as North Virginia Avenue, to show that we can still get those features into the streetscape, even if we're a little, a little short on the width. If there's anything you wanted to add, or?
So I think the spaces that they, that the Planning Commission and planning have talked about removing are the ones on Virginia.
Oh, sorry, did I switch?
Yeah, it's okay. Park would have the ADA spaces. And we have talked a little bit about the spaces on Virginia, maintaining the spaces on Virginia and actually making them short-term parking, about 15 to 20 minutes, and so that people can either run in and drop off books, or run up and just drop in books onto the outside drop. I felt it should be between 15 and 20 minutes, just to accommodate our patrons who are older or who may have more difficulty getting out of a car and mobility issues, so that they have enough time to get to the library and get back to their car. So, and we've also talked about bumping out the curb a little bit on the alley side as well, to give some extra space on that corner.
All right, thank you very much. How about comments on the exterior of the building? Ms. Hardy?
Great, thank you. So is bumping out the curb part of the budget? Moving the pole was not, or undergrounding the pole?
Moving the, undergrounding the service is not part of our budget, but bumping out the curb at the corner is part of our cost estimate and our construction budget.
Got it. And so, putting the Planning Commission's recommendation aside, does the plan change the number of parking spaces on Park or Virginia, or maintains what we've got already?
It maintains what we've got, because you have a sign back from the curb anyway that says, "No parking here at a corner." So instead of just having a sign, we're actually having that curb bumped out in that area.
Got it. So in the current plan, there's no spaces being lost. Planning Commission says maybe recommend taking away some of the spaces to give more sidewalk.
Yes.
Got it. No, I know it's a tricky thing between making sure there's enough parking there, because I know it's already at a premium, especially with pediatrician's office, so I think, it sounds like 14, is it 14 feet is what you had?
14 feet.
Is a pretty good compromise. I also think parking, besides actually giving options, is a way, nice way to buffer pedestrians.
Yes.
And so sometimes I think I'm a fan of that, especially on Park Avenue, maintaining those spaces, because people do speed after Virginia where Park Avenue widens, and so I think it'd be nice to actually maintain those spaces to slow traffic down for that reason as well. I also understand you guys got variances for lot coverage. Was that settled already, or is there?
Yeah, so we, we got three variances. One was for lot coverage, and two were for setbacks from the property line. So the lot coverage, I think it's at 41.6% now. They got a variance or a waiver for that back in 91, 92, and then our current, we up, we tried, we upped that to, I believe it was 52% lot coverage.
Okay. So given so much of the lot is going to be impervious, remind me again on some of the green elements of this? Are we trying to retain more stormwater? Are we adding?
Right now, there's no BNP, there's no stormwater management, the library was built and the additions were put on before those regulations really came into play. So anything we do is going to be better than what it is now. What we're planning to do is to put a cistern in the parking, under the parking lot, to capture the rainwater from the roof drains, and reuse that as part of our, with our irrigation trucks in the city and our flushing trucks, flusher trucks. So we can capture that water and reuse it, and that's how we're planning to meet our stormwater quantity and quality requirements.
Besides stormwater, if this were a non-municipal building, what kind of standards would we be holding, like a private?
We have to meet the stand, so, public projects have to meet the same standards as private projects. We'd have to, we're meeting those requirements, and we may, so, part of the stormwater program is to make sure that we're meeting our state requirements for the city in general going forward. So if we put a little bit extra into city-owned property and treat a little bit more than we, than we would be required to strictly by the code, then we're helping the city out in general. I can't give you a specific number, I haven't, I haven't looked through the design, but the thought was to put a little bit more money into increased treatment for the stormwater, so that it can help the city meet its statewide stormwater goals.
Got it. And then going to the temporary location, we haven't talked about that, but I think we've talked about it being moving to TJ.
Yes.
While we're on the topic of parking, what's the decision on kind of where patrons would park in that neighborhood, given that a lot of the TJ teachers park in that residential neighborhood already?
So we, in the MOU, we've come to an agreement on the MOU, it hasn't been signed, but the schools have looked at it, and we've looked at it several times and tweaked it, and we finally have a, we have a final version. And in that MOU, the library doesn't open until 9:30, so that's, that's to give the school buses time to get out, and then, then staff and patrons can start to use the building. But really, the only option is, is on-street parking for, in the surrounding neighborhoods for a year. It's temporary, it's, we don't really have any other place to put them.
Thanks.
All right, other comments. Mr. Z.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular drawing, A015, if you go near the top, and it's in black and white, but the entry portico and the massing seems to be a little bit different than what you've shown us in the site plan elevations. The earlier drawings seem to show the entry portico to be lower, and also on a raised platform, it's called a palatis in architecture speak, it looks like it could be a gathering plaza. There's a lot to like about both things. First of all, if you have a... I've got the bad mic tonight. First of all, if you do have a series of raised platforms in the front, you just go quickly back to the view from Park Avenue, couple, maybe one more.
Go to the very first rendering, maybe the corner view, is that what, you wanted to see, the very first rendering?
Yep.
There you go. So if you have that, then that tends to not only say entrance in many ways, but also says gathering space. And I have seen kids, adults, teens, and others, when they say, "Meet me at the entrance of the library," it performs a function that's more than just going into the library, they actually congregate around the current library. So that, there's a lot to like about having an entry expression that also provides a place for you to meet and just tarry, as opposed to going about your business and going in. Now going back to the, that black and white, which is color on our drawings here, I recall what you said a few minutes ago about having it, the entrance portico raised higher, and this does seem to show that, along with those windows that I think brings in that kind of natural light into that space, which I think is admirable. It's a natural tendency for people to want to add stuff to the project, and so I'm not going to do that per se, but I think that's an important piece for the entrance, important piece for lighting coming into that space. If you, for example, in late afternoon, with those high windows, with the light coming in and bouncing off the entrance, I think that is very meaningful to that space. And I would go further than that and say that, you know, there's, once you start messing around with the current slate roof, whether it's well-intended or not, putting in skylights, solar tubes, all that, all that natural light, I'm in favor, favor of intrinsically, but I think that, on balance, that the current state of lighting with LEDs and so on, gives you, gives you much better rendition, without having the effect of having sunlight that's by and large uncontrolled. You've got all this light coming into there, and it's just a big spot on the floor. And if it means that it's going to compromise integrity of the slate roof, I would just soon not have that. Just use your windows and preserve the main entrance, as shown here. I think that's, with the raised platform, where people can gather.
I did want to mention, this, this drawing that's shown here is, is the most recent version of the design that I received end of last week. So the changes that you see here were in response to feedback that we had gotten from the AAB to kind of bring it to this, you know, new, new design, or updated design.
So which one's?
That's the updated one.
That one there?
Yes.
Well, if you could preserve the elements of congregation and meeting, meet me at the entrance, those features, I think that would be a plus to the library. I think that's something we would want. Much more friendlier, actually, and those little windows on top. Thank you.
All right, other.
Yep. Just one question, since you've got that picture up. How are we feeling about the amount of, you know, concrete that presents itself there at that corner? Is, I'm trying to get a sense of, you know, how does it compare? So, it's not going to look quite so blank, or quite so impervious, or?
It'll look like brick pavers.
I understand we're trying to...
Because it will be brick pavers.
Create a, you know, create a space, but how does, just by comparison, the space dedicated to that compared to the curb cut that was done at the corner of, across from Columbia Baptist, at the corner of Columbia and Maple? The house there is sort of an older historic house, and when we made the corner improvements there, we introduced a pretty large paved space, which, to me, doesn't please the eye as much as it might.
Sure, I can't answer how it compares to that, because I can't, I don't know the details of that, that project, but the idea was to bump the curb out into the street to narrow the crosswalk space between the library and City Hall, and then the library and the residents across the street on Park Avenue, because right now, it's a kind of a wide pedestrian ways you cross, and it's, I think sometimes it can be a little bit precarious for pedestrians. And then the other idea was just to give a lot more pedestrian space area for people to move through that corner, to, if they're not going to the library, to kind of keep going down Park Avenue or North Virginia Avenue. I think it looks so in-your-face right here because of the prospective view, that's in the forefront. It's not, it's not really that large of an area, it's 22 feet from the corner of the stairs to the back of the curb. So that's about two feet wider than I think are the required streetscape along Broad Street. So between, like where the Harris Teeter is, that's about 20 feet. So it's not really that much bigger, but it just, the view, the angle that you're looking at here, it's putting that, that corner kind of right, right in front, so it stands up.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And that was feedback, I think, that we also got from council last time, or the time before, about making a wider area, oh, making a wider area so that people have enough room to pass by, and strollers and walking.
All right, who's next? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thank you. I just want to make sure the window treatments right there that you see under the portico remain. Glad you guys made the decision, it looks like, to put that in as addition to the small windows. The other ones previously look like prisoner intake, the large panels of glass. Second, in terms of the parking, I'm going to disagree with Ms. Hardy here, I do like the fact that you have a buffer in terms of the planters that are there, but I think an out-of-prevention is going to go a long way here. I have a feeling that at some point in the not-too-distant future, what is the emergency exit in the children's area downstairs is going to become a permanent entrance at some point, just given the amount of traffic that's going to want to move in and out of that corner of the building. Not tomorrow necessarily, but in the next few years, and I think what you're going to see between Cherry Hill Park and that bottom entrance, when that does happen, is a lot more traffic with kids and strollers, and just widening that, I think makes a lot of sense. It frankly just makes it more walkable and inviting, it just seems somewhat constricted, and to me, it doesn't really fit within the overall design of what we're doing to kind of open up the front entrance as well. And then finally, I would say, and I don't defer to Mr. Z on this, I'm not sure exactly what this is called, the roofline treatment, soffit, what's the word I'm looking for? That design element up under the?
Cornice? Cornice?
The roofline, the cornice line there with the little blocks, right? Just maintain it as consistent as we can with that design element around even the new pieces.
Yeah, it was the intent to maintain that.
Okay, I couldn't, I couldn't see for sure if that was included.
Called dentals, like teeth.
I knew there was, I knew there was something even more specific than cornice. I knew it was out there. Thank you. So, anyway, thank you guys for your hard work on this. It's really come a long way. This is great. Jenny Kim, thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Connally.
All right. Thank you for this. What's, is this a lead gold building?
Lead silver is what we're designing towards, and it's the newest version of lead, lead V4, which is even, the requirements are even more stringent, so it's even more challenging to meet those requirements.
Okay. And does that meet our, what we, Mr. Shields, the city policy on buildings?
It does, yes.
It does, okay. Thank you. And then what is this style called? I've heard people wax, rhapsodic about Georgian or colonial, or is this a style, or is it? I think it looks really cool.
Right.
I'm just wondering what we would call it.
It's called, after Thomas Jefferson, it's Palladio, kind of Italian revival.
Palladio, Italian revival?
Italianated revival, yeah. It's, if you take the dome off of Monticello, it would look very familiar. This would look very familiar.
Okay. And that fits into the official design...
Right. So, the deed said that we would build, that the city would build a building of colonial style as near as possible to the Falls Church. And so, we did ask Ms. McCroskey to look at that language and make sure that we were meeting the language of the deed, and from her perspective or her review, that we did meet that deed requirement. Because that building had already been built in 1952.
Right.
Well, not only that, Vice Mayor, but I think Thomas Jefferson, if he were alive, would take offense if he didn't call his building colonial.
I think I agree. Are you still going to have the car book drop in the back? That's still going to be there?
We very much would like to maintain it.
Okay.
We're not doing anything in the design in that back corner with the parking area. That whole area is remaining as is.
Okay, okay. And then has anyone been in touch with the family regarding the deed? And has, have we, no. Do we need to be, or an update, or?
I do have a contact with, I mean, that we can reach out to the family if folks want to. I think, I mean, I think the requirement for the colonial architecture was that, at the time of the deed, back in the 50s, that a building of colonial style would be built on the property within five years that was done. So, I think we talked about whether we need to do anything further and determined that we didn't. However, we can certainly, you know, I have a contact with a family who lives right here in Fairfax, and she actually has told me that she can reach out to everyone on prior matters, but we can reach out if staff wants to have somebody to get in touch with.
I didn't necessarily mean for permission's sake, just to keep them updated on what's happening and invite them to the grand opening.
Yes, we would do those things.
Mr. Mayor, oh.
Thank you. Mr. Z, you referred a minute ago to Palladium architecture, which was based upon the Italian Renaissance architect Andrea Palladio, that was studied by Thomas Jefferson and very much influenced Jefferson's work at Monticello and elsewhere, particularly University of Virginia. So, that's perhaps a more fitting characterization. On a more serious note, I want to go back to the interior for just a minute, the historical collection. And tell me a little bit more about that. How does it compare with the Virginia Room? Is it adequate for the things that we store there? Is it adequate to encourage people to donate historical artifacts to the city? Tell me a little bit more about that.
So, in terms of, we'd have to look at the square footage again, but it is an increase in square footage. And Marshall Webster has been talking with the library consultants and the architects about how that room would get laid out. And it's now more of a local history room as opposed to a Virginia Room. The board, the library board reduced the scope, and so it focuses on the history of the city of Falls Church. And they've been working diligently on getting items recorded and placed into that collection, and how we would store those items. They've been working on that as well. So, I think we could anticipate adding things to the collection and holding those things in storage there.
And it will be generally attractive for people to learn more about our history then and display and things like that.
Yes, yes. We very much want to make it more prominent part of the library, more accessible to people. So, we've also been talking about increasing hours and maybe having permanent hours when it's open, as opposed to, right now, it's open by appointment only.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, I've got, Mr. Lipton House?
Yeah, just one last thing I was remiss. We had talked about this previously, but I would implore staff and folks at the library to explore options related to shared parking with that office condo building next door. It seems to be severely underparked, given the amount of surface parking that they have. And I think that that is a very viable solution just based on preliminary conversations I've had. There would be, I think, mutual interest in exploring, providing some shared, dedicated shared parking, not poaching parking, but shared, dedicated parking for the library, that one would help offset the three lost spaces that we might lose on the side, but also make sure that we have legitimate dedicated parking. So, I would urge everybody to explore that.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Connally.
Just one more thought, and not related to the building, but your long-serving members that you mentioned earlier who are not on the library board anymore, it would be really nice if we could do some kind of proclamation or recognition of them for their years of service. And I guess Mr. Gernand is far away, but we could mail it to him. But we do proclamations or resolutions? What's?
We do certificates.
Certificates?
We, the city clerk's office does that, but we can also do presentations here if you...
Okay.
I'll work with Jenny.
Can we work on that?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Because I feel like they've put in so many years and so much time on the library, we should officially recognize that somehow. Brad has said that he will come back for the opening.
All right, sounds good. I've got a few comments if everyone else has done. One, I guess going back to maybe the perspective or one of the elevations, I do think the black walls immediately adjacent to the entrance, even if the name goes there, you might want to consider doing some kind of, even like a fake window in brick or something to give it. It just seems a bit blank to me, but something there. It could be landscaping, it could be vines growing up the wall, but it seems kind of like dead space. And so, I would give some consideration of that. How wide is the sidewalk at its pinch points? Where, for example, the, you know, that left...
Six feet is the narrowest point between the edge of the building and the planter. If you scroll down, this is the narrowest.
And so, it's six feet, and that six feet goes against what, like a three-foot wall
that's basically holding up the ramp?
Yeah, at its maximum height, I believe it's about two and a half feet. So, between zero and two and a half feet, and then the planter on the left-hand side.
I mean, how high is the planter from sidewalk grade?
That I'll have to look into. They didn't give, I didn't see the spot shots for the elevation for that yet, but I can look into that.
What kind of planter is it? For trees, for ground cover? What's going on there?
Haven't gotten that far yet. My, we just haven't designed that yet. Is there a preference for something you are seeing there?
Well, I guess for me, I mean, I have a concern. Six feet, when you go up against a wall, there's a shy zone, like nobody wants to rub up against a wall. They're not going to run, you know, an inch away from a wall. So, people naturally, I think, tend to be like a foot or so away from it, so they don't, you know, bump into the wall, which starts to make it kind of narrow, especially if you have like double strollers and people with double strollers and dogs. So, that pinch point concerns me some. I mean, I guess to me, it would be preferable if you had, if you have to have a planter, put a grate on top, you know, a grate on top of it, and maybe it has ground cover, so people can walk on it. But to me, I'm not positive. If it's, is it purely...
You can get rid of the planter.
Yeah, I mean, I would just give some consideration of that. Maybe it could be a bit narrower. Maybe it could be a round planter instead of a long rectangle. Just, I mean, just give some thought to that. I do think people ought to be able to traverse this without bumping in like they do other parts in the city. The stairs at the entrance, is that essentially required because of grade? So, there's no way we can have an at-grade entrance there? Okay. I would support moving the telephone pole somewhere or the other if we can figure that one out. I mean, obviously, underground, it would be preferable. Let's see. I actually do like keeping the parking spaces. I mean, given the pressures apparently we have with parking at the library, I do like the idea of short-term parking, and I would support that on Park Avenue. As you go down about that block away down Park Avenue, there are people who live in those townhouses who have a third or fourth car, just park there for extended periods of time. I think it'd be nice to have some turnover there. And so, I would support, you know, one-hour parking or something like that along Park Avenue, maybe within a block or two of the library, to support turnover for the libraries.
Down near the, like the townhouses?
Yeah, I mean, there are, I know there's some people there, yeah, who have additional cars. They park on the street regularly for extended period of time, and I think it'd be a better use of parking spaces to have some more turnover. So, I would support having short-term parking, whether it's 15 minutes, half an hour, an hour, within maybe a block of the library to help provide some additional on-street parking. Let's see what else I've got here. I prefer the first entrance you showed, the one, I don't know if that's the current one or the prior one, that one?
That was, that was our schematic.
Okay.
As you get more information and start to design the building, you get more information and you see how things need to shift and change. And I think as they started to work out the grades and the widths of the pedestrian way, that's just, that's how the, this is how the entrance evolved. They kind of pushed the, that portico back a little bit and shrunk it to push the stairs in so that you could have more of a pedestrian space at the street grade. And, you know, it's just a trade-off. We could, you know, pull it back out, but then you'd have less, less area at the corner for pedestrian movement.
Gotcha. I just prefer the look of it. I don't know functionally, and I defer to my smarter colleagues about that, but just aesthetically, I like, I like the look of that, but again, take it forward.
Is it the height or the steps?
Yeah, I think it's the height and just sort of the scale, you know? It doesn't feel like it's, that feels like the legs are too long on that, you know, like the legs to the arch feel like it's longer than the rest of the building is, like it's stretched out too much. If there was maybe a base to it, maybe they might look better. And I don't want to, Dan would be the guy to talk to about that. But anyway, that's just sort of a general reaction. But I think you guys are making some really good progress with this, and I think it's really come along nicely. And I think a lot of, at least what I'm saying, are tweaks. So, anyway, are there other comments or anything else everybody wants to say, Ms. Hardy?
Just a final question around the community input process. So, given where you are with the detailed design, what's the next step?
The next step is to present kind of interior renderings of the building, interior perspective views, and we're working on that right now as far as the carpet and the colors and the furniture. We actually had a meeting today with the architect to kind of start that process of what the interior finishes are going to look like. So, I believe that the next step is to update those renderings with the final selections, which should be, or our preferred selections, which should be end of February. I don't want to go out to the public with a design that we're still not sure of, that as far as the interior goes and the furniture. So, we want to run, talk to the board about those furniture selections and the interior finish selections, and then we'll update the renderings and go back out. Jenny will be going back out to the public probably end of February, beginning of March is what we were talking about.
When do you need everything finalized after that?
When do we need everything finalized?
When you need all the input back ends that you can finalize the plans and...
So, we want to start construction in August in order to get under roof by the time it gets cold outside and the weather gets bad. That'll just help our construction process in general. So, we, you know, we would need approval from the building permits, you know, in July. So, we're looking at going to, our next steps are to review the design development documents and to assess the costs. And so, at the end of this month, we are doing a value engineering session to look, once we get the cost back from our C-MAR, to see if there's anything we need to take out as we move, before we move into the construction document phase. So, you know, Jenny and I were thinking that the next time we go out to the public would be informational. I mean, we're not going to change the design. The big decisions that we're looking for public input for have been, have been made, whether children's going to be upstairs or downstairs. I don't know that we, we hadn't thought about getting public input on whether or not they liked the paint color or the carpet color, but we did want to show them the direction that we're going. If there was a, you know, an outcry that people hated it, we could certainly go back and change the finishes, as long as they weren't more expensive finishes. But our thought was more, would be more, our next outreach to the public would be more informational, and this is, this is where we're heading.
Got it. No, I don't think people were going to, I'm sure they'll comment about paint colors and carpets, but I was more thinking about flow and use. You know, people who are there day-to-day might have comments on a basement entrance, for example, or how strollers are parked, or things like that, things that could be tweaked. I don't know if you have time in your schedule, but I encourage you to do that if possible.
Okay.
All right. Well, we've got lots more on the agenda, and we thank you very much for coming tonight. And Ms. Callahan, we thank you for all your service to our community. We're all going to miss you and hope that you'll come back and visit, particularly the library.
This is my library, so I'll be, I'll be coming back, and it's set up for success. We have a great team, great architect, great construction manager. So, I have every, I have all the faith in the world that it's going to be a great project. So, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, let's move on to our next item on the agenda, which is oaths of office to new board and commission members. Are there any tonight?
I think Judy Felgar is here, yes.
Right.
For the Northern Virginia Community College Board.
All right, come on down.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the Northern Virginia Community College Board.
As a member of the Northern Virginia Community College Board.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God. Thank you.
All right, congratulations.
Signature.
Come on down. We'll give you our hearty thanks in a pen, and I hope that's good enough for you. Okay, let's move on now to a summary of written comments. Madam Clerk.
We had three letters from citizens. Allison Brown and Gardner Humphries of 706 Poplar Drive encouraged council to make affordable housing a priority. Keith Thurston wrote to express concern with redevelopment of the downtown park. And the Village Condominium Board provided comments about the West End Economic Development Project.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to now move on to the receipt of public comments. I don't have any speaker slips at this time, but if anyone in the audience would like to speak, you're certainly welcome to do so. We ask that you fill out a speaker slip, hand it to the clerk, come to the dais and, or come to the, whatever that thing's called, podium, and keep your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. All right, so we have no speakers at this point. We're going to go on and move to council requests. Are there any council requests? Okay, seen none. Let's move on to the report of the city manager, Mr. Shields.
I'd like to just give a quick report on the snowfall for the last two days and give out thanks to our Department of Public Works crew who worked through the night on Saturday and Sunday, and will still be working to get our streets cleared. Our Wreck and Parks crew, who work all of our sidewalks in front of city facilities, and our office communications, which does, I think, so much to try to keep the public informed about what's happening during any kind of a emergency or unusual event. But as we go forward, I do want to thank everybody in the community who's helped their neighbors and shoveled their sidewalk, and for our business owners who have shoveled... neighbors and shoveled their sidewalk, and for our business owners who have shoveled their sidewalks. Everybody knows that the city is becoming more and more walkable, and clearing your sidewalk immediately after a snowstorm really is critical. People expect it, and that is the norm now. So everybody who has done it, thank you very much, and those who have not, I encourage you to do it as soon as you can. And the city will go out to remind those that have not shoveled their sidewalks, and that's per the city code. All commercial businesses responsible for clearing sidewalk from the front of their business within 12 hours of an end of a snowfall, and similarly, all homeowners are required to clear the sidewalk in front of their property within 12 hours of a snowfall. And so I encourage everybody to do that. So that's all I'd like to report tonight.
All right, thank you very much, and we certainly appreciate it. I think those of us who've traveled outside the boundaries of the City Falls Church can appreciate the fine work that Public Works and Company have done around the city, so thank you very much for that. Why don't we, unless there's other comment, move on to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you like to call the first item?
Yes, we have a first reading for TO 19-01, Ordinance to amend ordinance 1990 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2019 for the general fund and the capital improvements program funds.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter and members of the council. We have for you a request to grant first reading for the Second Amendment for the current fiscal year, the budget amendment. The first one was brought to you earlier in October. We are requesting a total of $812,000 increase in appropriation to the general fund comprising of multiple grants, including metro route 3T extension, maintenance of the bike share program equipment, and a grant from National Endowment for the Humanities and $50,000 for the voluntary concessions from the Railroads LLC. In addition to that, of note is a request for an appropriation of $350,000 for the existing Big Chimney Improvements Project. $235,000 of that is going to be, is being proposed to come from the sale of proceeds, from the sale of 201 West Broad Street, which was mailboxes, et cetera, previously known as, and $115,000 in interest income from the 2018 bond proceeds. These were issued for multiple projects earlier last fiscal year in May of 2018. And to date, as of December 31st, we have $270,000 in interest income so far, and we are proposing to use $115,000 of that. In the past, interest income has been used in two ways, either for funding the capital project itself or debt service, and we have done both ways for using to, using towards debt service was in 2012 and 2013, and using towards the project was in the 2019 CIP funding. And in addition to that, we are requesting $700,000 in capital projects, Capital Improvements Program Fund for appropriation for the land acquisition project located on Parker Avenue, South Oak Street, and Fellow's Court. This will be in addition to the $4 million appropriation, that's in the existing fiscal year 19 to '24 CIP that already was approved, adopted by council. And lastly, there is a request for $75,000 increase for the South Washington Planning Opportunity Program. This is a true-up of the fiscal year 17 and 18 NMTA 30% funds. And these, there are no changes to this item since the last discussion at the work session last Monday. And with that, I conclude my report and open to any questions you may have.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Mr. Snyder.
Not really a question, just a comment that a significant number of the projects here is a result of regional funds, which we've been able to get through our participation in regional transportation and other agencies. So I think our regional participation really does pay off in a very direct way in addition to more general regional cooperation, so I wanted to make that point. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you for your participation in our regional bodies and efforts as well. I'm sure you were instrumental in helping us get some of these funds, so our thanks to you. Are there any other comments from members of council? Mr. Z.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the recitation and the great job you're doing with regard to our finances. I don't have a specific question, but I just want to remind the citizens and all those that might have some questions here on the things that we're doing, that we are going to fund the Big Chimneys Park as the citizens have requested, provide full value, all lighting and stormwater and amenities. We're not cutting our corners on this one. And also, we have the opportunity with this appropriations request to acquire for the first time a last remaining large open space in the city, formerly known as the Fellow's Properties, that will become a great open space and park across from Thomas Jefferson. So thank you so much for your good work.
All right, are there any other comments? I'm now going to open the floor up to the public. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to this item? Seen none, the matter is closed to the public. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to grant first reading TO 1901, schedule second reading and public hearing for January 28, 2019, and advertise the same according to law.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Duncan.
Yes.
Ms. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse.
No.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Z.
Yes.
Mayor Tarter.
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you, council.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Let's move on to the next item.
Yes, we have TR 19-04, nope, I'm sorry, TR 19-02, Resolution adopting the City of Falls Church 2019 legislative program.
Hold on a second. Celeste and I have to be going to see today for a short wire. The legislative program before you has not changed since your work session, so I don't have any additional modifications to highlight this evening. I do want to call out that you have at the dais House Bill 2297, the delegate Simon has patroned, and this is in direct response to the Falls Church City Public School School Board's request to clarify enrollment residencies based on boundary line adjustments, and this will correct back basically to state code authority that was there previously. City attorney and the school board's attorney has worked collaboratively to confirm that this language would meet the intended request. So that's there before you. And then I wanted to thank council for the participation in the Saturday's Town Hall. There was a good turnout for the Town Hall held by Senator Sasslon, delegate Simon, a lot of good questions. And I'll forward the questions and comments to council when I receive the scanned copies of the index cards they were going to share with us. With that, I'm glad to answer any questions or follow up on any items that council wishes.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Z.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have any further information on the county services?
Nothing new since the work session. We do have a budget amendment, and they're dealing with it, but it's too early to tell yet.
I think Ms. Vincent's in the audience, but I, the number that I've heard is we anticipate that there will be about an $80,000 impact to the city budget, based on the information we're getting from the Community Services Board related to this issue of taking funds that used to go directly to CSPs and instead having those come through Medicaid waivers.
But how the General Assembly will respond or act to the budget amendment, we don't have any feedback. With Mr. Z's question, it did remind me, I did have a conversation with Senator Sasslaw at the end of the Town Hall meeting, and he has submitted a budget amendment to try to address the Miller House funding to get prioritization for city residents. So working to get the specific language and dollar amount will keep council and staff apprised.
Finally, I just have a comment then, or two, that this package is a request for us to support a passage of what's being called the Solar Freedom Bill. It has eight items that would provide additional authority for municipalities, private businesses, and the utilities to enhance this state's Commonwealth's ability to deploy renewable and solar power. It is a effort that I've worked on, but the real thank you for all the lifting goes to Mr. Tim Stevens, who's worked very hard on this for the last eight months. And also to thank our state senator Dick Sasslaw for supporting passage of the Equal Rights Amendment. And I would urge that we all get behind this effort and make Virginia the 38th state to ratify the Equal Rights Amendment and make it part of the Constitution. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other, yes, we got a few down there. Start with Mr. Lichtenhouse, work our way up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a lot of thought put into these, and I certainly appreciate all the work that's being done, because I'm still relatively new to this. Will we have a follow-up report outlining exactly what was passed that's relevant to the request that we made in our own legislative agenda? And when will that happen?
Throughout the session, you will get updates, email us, things are happening and new things, and then my goal is to go back to the end of General Assembly report, which the last two years I haven't been able to do. So it would conclude after the February 22nd deadline. There still may be some delayed items until April if there has to be a reconvened session for budget or something like that.
Okay, yeah.
Somewhere towards the end of February.
Just a comprehensive report outlining all of that? Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Hardy.
Great, thank you. I don't think this is in our legislative agenda, but I've actually heard from a lot of citizens about this. This is, I think, what people are calling the conformity issue, so the fact that at the federal level, tax laws change where a majority of people will no longer do itemized deductions. Those income limits are not transferred over at the state level, and I think the benefit to the state is that they're expecting a pretty large budget windfall's result, i.e. more people in Virginia will be paying higher income taxes this year. So I think it's especially going to hit Northern Virginia pretty hard. I'm not sure what the General Assembly is doing about it. I know there was some talk about it. I know it's not reflected in our legislative program, but I think, I'd just like to request that we just track where we are with the issue so we can better communicate to our citizens what the impact will be well before April 15th.
Certainly can track it, and certainly Senator Sasslaw's actively involved in that issue, working with the governor's legislation that's been put forward. Thank you.
Could I say just, thank you, could I say just a word about scooter regulations? I sent an email around last night, just taking off on the Washington Post article yesterday, which was an overview of what a number of jurisdictions across the country are grappling with. I think Austin is going to be a test bed for one of the insurance companies to assess, you know, the frequency and extent of injuries related to people riding scooters or people hit by people who are riding scooters. At any rate, that's, that was my takeoff point on that email. I sent it to Carol and to Ms. Conley as a government ops thing. But then Cindy, I've just sent you a VML, January 11th email section of that email, which speaks to scooter regulations, so there's apparently a good bit going on already. Several bills have been dropped in the hopper. Anyway, I sent that on to you. I don't know that we need to, you know, add it, obviously, to the document that we're considering tonight, but by the time we go down to Richmond, week, 10 days from now.
24th.
It would be helpful, I think. We were talking the other day with a business owner in the city who has an employee who, you know, uses a scooter to get from East Falls Church to his place of work here in the city and back, and we are beginning to see the scooters show up here. So I think it would be timely if we got educated on this as much as we can and use the resources of the VML, because I'm sure they'll be on it as they are on anything that has to do with a lot of jurisdictions' concerns. So I would just ask that that be a point of focus for our lobby day down there.
Certainly can. Thank you for forwarding that to me, and also touch base internally with our planning staff and zoning. I know they've done some preliminary monitoring of, like, the Arlington Pilot Project and get their input on that.
Okay, thanks. All right, anything else? Okay, is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter? Seen none, the matter is closed to the public. Mr. Snyder, do you have something else you want to say?
I'd like to move TR 19-02.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Duncan.
Yes.
Ms. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Z.
Yes.
Mayor Tarter.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
All right, thank you very much.
Just, Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment that I didn't make before, and much appreciate the effort here to provide reasonable gun legislation and regulation. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to the next item, please.
Yes, we have TR 18-36, Resolution to adopt the 2018 update to the Affordable Living Policy.
And Ms. Lewis is going to give the staff report, but are we going to pass out? Let's go ahead and do that. So we got a few comments over the weekend from council members on the Affordable Living Policy, specifically from Vice Mayor Conley and Councilmember Hardy. And so what's being passed out is a draft that will show in yellow track changes so people can see what those comments were and how they show up in this policy. I think staff will talk about them, maybe give a report on the policy more broadly, but I think there was general support for the comments that were made, and so I think they're reflected in here with perhaps one or two exceptions or additional comments on them. So with that prelude, a lot of work has gone into this. Council discussed this at work session, and now turn it over to Ms. Lewis.
Good evening. And for council is requested to adopt the update to the 2013 Affordable Housing Policy, rename the Affordable Living Policy. As I mentioned last week, it's been a long process, and this is part of a regular five-year update to the policy, and we are looking, the policy addresses the diverse housing needs of its current and future populations by encouraging and actively supporting a mix of housing types and price levels. And as we mentioned, the policy, the provision of affordable housing is consistent with the city's vision statement of being a welcoming and inclusive community. And it's also an important part of economic development. And as I also mentioned, along with the vision chapter, we are also updating the Comprehensive Plan, and the Comprehensive Plan is a guide for the provision of housing in general. It's more comprehensive. The Affordable Housing Policy specifically focuses on the provision of affordable housing. So that's the differences between the two, just so you know. Our chair, Craig Chaney, who's the Chair of the Housing Services Advisory Council, and Tori McKinney, who's the Vice Chair of the, well, former Vice Chair of the Housing Commission, pulled together a really diverse group from different areas. We had developers, we had clients, users of services, we had a disabilities advocate, we had teachers, and we had someone from VHDA, all as a part of the committee. Spent a lot of time looking at a lot of recommendations. We met four times, held two community meetings. We reviewed research and reports from other jurisdictions. And so at the end of all that, we came up with several changes for the city council to consider, and those changes were change the name of the Affordable Housing Policies to the Affordable Living Policy to reflect the reality that housing is interconnected with other areas of life, accept cash in lieu of ADUs when it's in the city's best interest, restart the first-time homebuyer program to provide down payment loans, encourage developers to provide ADUs for the life of the property, expand the area median income thresholds for rental ADUs into two tiers in order to meet the needs of low-income and moderate-income earners, establish a higher threshold range- moderate-income earners, establish a higher threshold ranging from 80% to 120% AMI for ownership ADUs, and encourage applicants for development approval to provide increased amounts of ADUs above the prior 6% in policy. So, we brought this to council, we brought these recommendations to council, and you all asked us to send it out to boards and commissions. We did. Got all of their recommendations back. The major thing that they recommended that was different than what was already in the policy was to allow for standalone affordable properties and to allow for condominium developments with reduced amenities and/or reductions in parking minimums. So, last week, council made some suggestions. We have incorporated all of those suggestions that were made. I hope you will see them in the policy. They are in blue. All of the changes that we've made thus far are in blue in the policy. And so, you can look on -- see what those changes were. We included additional language explaining why it was renamed the Affordable Living Policy, made that consistent, made our case, a stronger case, that affordable living's important to entire community. We revised language for council to contribute funds on an annual basis, and we provided additional language that gives a more context to affordable -- to that table that was a source of conversation last week. And we included a summary page that people seem to really like. Thank you, Ms. Hardy, for that suggestion. The Housing Commission and others have really liked the location of that. Makes it a lot easier to read. And we also looked at the future housing needs and targets. As you all mentioned, it was a little hard to understand that chart, so we think with our new changes that that's a lot easier to read. So, and since that time, last Friday, we had a few more council changes, and that's why we passed this out to you today, because if you look at the yellow highlight, those are the new changes that came from Councilman Hardy and Councilman Connolly. We made those changes. They were pretty minor, and so you can look at those council changes online, 105. It was just pretty minor changes regarding language and that type of thing. So, those have been input into the document, and so at this time, we feel that we have incorporated everybody's suggestions. We spent a lot of time on this. We feel it's really important. Everybody's waiting for it, and so we hope that you all are able to adopt the policy at this point in time. That's our hope.
All right, thank you very much for your fine work. We appreciate all your efforts. Do we have additional comments? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you.
This reads really nicely. I really appreciate that you put in the explanation of affordable housing versus affordable living.
Yes.
That makes it very clear at the beginning, and then all the other changes throughout, and the list of recommendations at the end is really helpful as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duncan, and Mr. Z.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
About page three. We've talked about this. First of all, thank you for all your work. Much work has been done, the degree to which many of us up here have been involved in urging you on and wordsmithing the product is a reflection, I think, of our interest in the issue and our desire to do more to make affordable housing opportunities available. To that end, we've talked a number of times about Lee Square and Merrill House, 115 units at Lee Square and 159 units at Merrill House, moving out of the affordable range over the measurement time that this document tracks about five years ago. As far as I can remember, we haven't really dug down into that and looked at what kind of money are we talking about? I mean, how far out of affordable are those two buildings, developments? And how much would we need to marshal in terms of funds to hold them at least where they are now, if not, you know, improve their affordable position so that as rents continue to go up, at least rents there perhaps could be stabilized? Is that a number that we have ever, you know, researched or have?
No, and I don't have the rents in front of me, but Merrill House and Lee Square are not affordable anymore, and they haven't been for several years. There are a few units at Merrill House, you know, that are right at that edge, but as far as Lee -- and neither one of them accepts housing choice vouchers anymore. They used to. They grandfathered people in that lived there. And also, there's an issue with, you know, with vacancies. They haven't had vacancies in a really long time. So, currently, I mean, and they have not --
Do the rents there relative to the rents at West Broad or Lincoln, are they about the same? Are they somewhat below what you'd pay at West Broad or Lincoln?
I don't have that with me right now.
And I realize that I'm asking questions that I should have asked.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
This could have -- should have occurred to me, you know, weeks or months before, but, you know, to my credit, as far as I know, nobody else has thought to ask them either. So, the reason I'm trying to just get that on the record here right now is that I think this is going to go through tonight. But then, the question is, okay, now what do we do? You know, what do we do to preserve the fields? We've talked a lot about that, and I think we have some very rough idea of how much money that might cost in partnership with another group, et cetera, et cetera. But I don't believe that we have looked at Lee Square and Merrill House as older buildings which don't have the, you know, amenities of your newer buildings, and my, I guess, rough expectation is that their rents are a little lower than you'd pay at West Broad or Lincoln. And therefore, my question is, as we go forward, if we're going to create an affordable housing fund and try to deploy it, could we send some of that money to those two developments in an effort to at least stay where we are? I mean, I understand that they're not affordable now, but whatever they are, they're only going to get less affordable as we go forward unless we do something. And the something that we would do there, I'm hoping would be a little less costly than the something we might do, you know, certainly to build a building from scratch or maybe, you know, to try to somehow apply funds to rents at more expensive properties. So, I just want to ask that now, and if you could, as we move forward, maybe the next time we meet, have some idea of what kind of money we're talking about.
Okay.
Okay, please.
And this is something that they have spoken about, the work group spoke a lot about that. I know Merrill House has done improvements on the property, and the rents have been raised, you know, as a result of that. Even one of our commission members, you know, has had her rent raised.
And the same applies to Broad Falls, too.
Yes, that's true.
You know, 10 years ago, had we known what we know today, could we have done something to have, you know, held on to some affordability at Broad Falls Channel -- or Lee Square and Merrill House? And I think the answer to that is yes, we could have done something.
Not sure exactly what it would be, but that's the type of discussions we --
Right, exactly. So, looking to the next five years, is there anything we can do to try to hold on to, you know, what passes for quasi, not officially legally affordable, but at least --
Market rate affordable.
You know, low, medium, medium-market rate rentals. Okay, thanks.
I was just going to say, it's definitely a healthy conversation, but Housing Human Services does maintain on the website, and I just brought it up for a reference, the apartment guide.
Oh, great.
So that you can see all the rental rates for the annual update.
All right. Ms. -- I think Mr. Z, Mr. Z, and then Vice Mayor Connolly?
I really don't have much to add to this. I think that we've spent a lot of time talking about this, and I think we're probably ready to move on to approving it and actually going with some real work on this. So, when everyone else has had their comments done, I'm going to be happy to move it.
Vice Mayor Connolly, then we'll work our way down the table.
Oh, I was going to move it.
Oh, go ahead and move it then. Is anyone else? Let me go ahead and open up. Yeah, sure.
I just want to say again, and I know I said this last time, and I think I've said it in every meeting that we've had, servant on the Affordable Housing Policy Work Group, it should not be lost on council or anybody else that's thinking about affordable living that what gets lost in this conversation in some cases is workforce housing. The folks that work for the city, police, fire, teachers, things like that. We talk a lot about the low-income aspect of this, which is very important to have a diversified housing stock, but as we think through approvals of projects and where money comes from and units set aside, that we not lose sight of the fact that there are folks that work and serve this community and this city that also need affordable places to live and not have to spend hours in a car commuting. So, that shouldn't -- hopefully, should not be lost on anybody as we continue this conversation about affordable living.
And we did add that to the policy workforce.
All right.
And we do currently have workforce units.
All right, Ms. Hardy.
Thank you. Two things. First, thank you for the many iterations of this. I appreciate you incorporating the feedback. I think the feedback is just indicative of how important this issue is to all of us, so I appreciate the patience and the hard work. The second, which I think, commenting on what Mr. Duncan and Mr. Lichtenhouse said is, I think we're all also looking forward to actually getting into the cop plan. So, this really gets into the meat of the issue, which is, well, what are we going to do about it, right? Because there's workforce housing, there's senior housing, there's housing for young people, families who've got kids who graduate school that can't afford to come back to their community. And overall, what should our overall housing stock should be? I know we're really focused on affordable here, but I'm a big believer in supply and demand, and I believe that if you have more supply, prices will go down. And so, we are generally pretty restrictive on how much housing we're willing to build. And I think a reality of the region is, we're probably going to need more housing in this entire region. So, I think that's part of that Comprehensive Plan discussion that I think is really important. So, to the extent that we can involve council in that early and often, I think you're going to have a very engaged council who will want to discuss that.
Okay.
So, thank you.
All right. I'm going to open this up to the public for comment. If anyone wishes to speak, now is the time. Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt TR-18-36, hereafter to be known as the Affordable Living Policy.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Council.
Sure. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
So, Ms. Lewis, will this -- this will be up on our -- this will be up on the website, and the word "draft" will come off, and it will --
Oh, I was wondering who was talking.
This will be up on the website, and the word "draft" will come off.
Yes.
So, I can print out a copy and put it in.
Yes, it will say "adopted" with tonight's date.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Shields, did you have anything you wanted to say before we get started on the consent?
Well, it's -- I did want to note that we have the contract with American Disposal Services, and it's on consent, but we also have a -- Mike Whitfield, our Director of Public Works, and we also have a guest. Chris McGow is here, and he is now an employee of Fairfax County as of last week, but he was instrumental in throughout this procurement and in the negotiations to get us to where we have a very strong recommendation to move forward with American Disposal Services to continue their work in the city at a slightly lower cost and with enhanced services. It was a really rigorous process, but there are a lot of changes that are happening in the solid waste field, particularly in the recycling field. And so, I just wanted to note that Mr. McGow is here. If you do have questions about it, and there are some policy issues, particularly with respect to recycling, that we don't want to get out ahead of, but maybe just signal that there may be some things we're going to need to wrestle with in the future in the world of recycling because of the changing markets for recycled products. And so, Mr. McGow is happy to answer any questions about that as well.
All right. Does anyone wish to take the solid waste portion off of consent? Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Z?
Well, as much as I would like to take it off consent, I'm not sure what's the best way of handling this. I do have some questions, some comments. And I see here that if we don't approve it by January 31st, we're not going to have a contract, and the city's going to look like Marseille during the strike, which is not going to happen. So, what's the best way of doing this?
So, if there are questions or comments, just to take action, if you still wish to take action on it tonight, you could take it off consent, and then it would just be subject to a separate vote.
Okay, I move to take this item off consent.
All right. You want to go ahead and start with that one? Why don't we bang that out and our folks?
Yeah, so with that introduction, maybe we could just invite Mr. McGow forward, and maybe if you wanted to just say real quickly kind of some of the key issues in this contract, and then answer any questions.
Thank you, Wyatt. Yeah, sure, I'll just mention, we work really hard on this contract. It's going to look really seamless. So, that first week of February, trash is going to be collected, and it's going to be slightly lower in cost than it was before, so we're proud of that. The big changes, I think, are in the recycling world, and specifically, there's things like glass, and there's some other issues that are mixed in with what we -- and things that we previously threw in that green bin, we were excited about. Markets have changed dramatically, and those changes have made it tricky for the country and for the region specifically. So, we've had to deal with some costs. For the first time since I've worked here, we had to start paying to push recyclables through back in March or April, and that has only gotten worse, and then it's sort of plateaued, and the markets appear to be fairly stable for the next year, but my industry peers are saying that trend is likely to be stable for another 12 months into the future. So, the challenge isn't picking up, moving the waste around and managing it, it's really on the recycling side. What do we consider recyclable? What is actually being recycled, and how do we manage that? And I think that might be where you were going with some of your questions. But I'll just open with that. Is the hauling piece, we're excited about, and we have more services at a lower cost, but the recycling piece, we're sort of subject to what the markets can do. It's an entirely private sector-driven exercise. So, I can answer any questions that you have about that.
All right. Any questions you have, Mr. Z? You heard him.
Well, first of all, welcome back, even if it's only for a few minutes. You don't look that much different. You might be a little more shaven, your hair's a little shorter.
They make me dress nicer at Fairfax.
And there's that, too. I didn't want to talk about that at all. You know, actually, solid waste is part of a larger discussion. It's not -- it's something that we don't think much of until it comes time to pay it, and then we pay it. It's easy to say, for example, that what we used to consider to be recyclable, much of it isn't, just because the market isn't there. For example, last year in January, China decided that they would no longer take the fiber or plastic from the United States. Well, that leaves it to others within this country that could possibly use the plastics that so many of us collect. But in fact, the single-stream recycling machines can't distinguish very well between a crushed plastic bottle or a crushed can. They both reflect, and of course, they reject them both. That seems to indicate that, you know, we could probably go a long ways about creating some value in this if we actually had a way of separating the plastics from the metal and get people to understand that you don't put polystyrene or polyurethane foam in with your recycle, because that makes your entire load of recycling trash. And so, a net positive resource now becomes a net deficit. With regard to things like glass, well, you know, things move around a little bit. The country's appetite for glass is approximately 11 million tons per year, of which 5 million tons of glass comes from recycle. Yes, I get it that there's no local demand for glass, and weighs a lot of -- it costs a lot to move it, so it may be easier just to dump it in the ground somewhere. We are eventually going to run out of spaces in the earth to dump this stuff. It's a whole lot like electric cars. We could use the glass very easily for aggregate, for roadwork, and it makes probably for a better grade of aggregate, but until someone builds a machine and collects it and makes some money off it, we're not going to have that possibility. So, that's why glass is kind of a waste right now, because no one has figured out how to build the machine and move it on the value equation. I don't see anything in here about food waste. Maybe that's on purpose, but I do want to say that we have moved, as you've observed, from a net positive of $85,000 a year for recycle to now a deficit of $30,000 we're paying. So, you know, it doesn't take an MBA to query, why are we even recycling? Let's burn it all. Put it all in the trash. Let's burn it all. Put it all in the trash. Change all those green containers to gray. Let's just dump it, save ourselves $30,000. That would be an easy answer, wouldn't it? Of course, the more complicated answer would be, why don't we do what other countries do? Coming back from Sweden last year, you know they have eight different containers for your trash? Everyone, it's a voluntary program and that small country of 12 million people, 98% of people diligently separate their stuff into eight different containers and they make money off it. You take your glass back to the ABC store, they give you money on it. It gives you a discount on the next bottle of vodka. How cool is that? We could do something similar. We ought to be able to do that. This is a country that is built on the virtues of being frugal with its resources. No country can afford to throw away stuff and call it trash. Now, I guess the only question I have is, what is your prediction for the future with respect to recycling? Because that is, it's limited, term limited.
Yeah.
We might be okay for this year, but bad things could happen soon.
Yeah.
Can you tell us about that?
Yeah, sure. I want to address a lot of the ideas that you just mentioned. The possibility of moving back to a dual stream recycling system, take back to a manufacturer. What we did in this RFP was we tried to take those visionary concepts that are unique to this wonderful community and go out with an RFP and ask the business community for, if they can actually deliver things like that. So we asked for things like that. We asked for enhanced litter collection, pragmatic things. We wanted, we wanted to take the City of Falls Church, we wanted to keep the success where it's at and see what was possible in the business community. What could these experts in the private sector deliver to the City of Falls Church? And then we would evaluate those and then we would put things together in a package that made financial sense. So when we asked them for all these wonderful big ideas, another cool one is to not to dual stream it, but to use the same container, but to use different colored collection bags that you would intermix in a bigger 96 gallon and you'd have an optical sort at the recycling facility that could kick off the bags based on the color that they are. We see that model in Europe run quite a bit to simplify the collection, to mitigate the cost. The problem was that we didn't get any responses like that. Our vision for waste diversion and cool, you know, all sorts of cool ideas is just a vision. And we came out and put this out there to the public sector. We had a good number of businesses that attended our pre-proposal conference. We just did not receive. We did, and it was obvious to me in the end in that what we were asking was to kind of destroy or change the way that the trash collection business is set up, is what we'd asked for. And the companies that proposed it and that are good at it weren't ready to totally break the model apart. So we really wanted to do that, but we just, we were only to move, we are only able to make that incremental step forward, which is more on the customer service side, some sort of light green enhancements. What happens, where do we go in the future and what does that look like? Is it smarter to take the green containers away and burn everything, as you said? Well, what, here's how the bill system works every month, is that we're paying about $10,000 to burn all of the trash and we're paying about $2,000, $2,500, give or take, market conditions as they fluctuate, to recycle things. Meaning that some of the things in the green container are still very valuable. There's other things in that green container which are a cost and a drag to the recycling system. And that's why there's that cost, that tip fee, just to push the material through all the conveyor belts to run it through the recycling place. So on cost alone, you're still getting a heck of a deal by having that green container out there and pushing things through the recycling system. It's still a really good idea to lean heavily on recycling. If you just burned everything, we would essentially double our cost to route it through the trash waste. So it makes financial sense and what we expect is that the markets, their market, they're commodities, so they fluctuate up and down, is to be resilient in these tricky market conditions. City of Falls Church has one of the lowest contamination rates in the region. The last time we sorted out what was in your green bin, it was about 4.5% trash, whereas the regional average is something like 12% up to 20% trash. So you already have a very resilient community that's educated, that's interested in it. So please don't go away from recycling. If any community were able to weather such a storm, it would be the City of Falls Church.
All right, thanks very much. We have some comments on the other end of the table. How about Ms. Hardy, then Mr. Lickenhouse?
Thank you. Welcome back, Mr. McGow. Two thoughts. One is every year we talk about kind of budget efficiencies with the schools. Do the schools also participate with American Disposal Services? Or is that an opportunity where we can get some scale if we included them?
Yeah, possibly. We thought about that before we ever wrote the contract. It was just too hard to kind of push the two things together. The schools use, have a separate contract for commercial front loader service, whereas what this contract is mostly focused on is the residential. So there are two separate collection vehicles that are servicing it. One throwing it over the top and another that's loading it in the back of the truck. So that probably would, the efficiencies might not be as great as you would think. There was some front load collection, but just at the city government facilities. And that was a very, very small part of what we were asking the business community to solve. But it's something to think about in the future.
And then the second is on the discussion about recyclables and just being less valuable. I know we also talk about the other two legs, which is reducing and reusing. So maybe a good opportunity to kind of push that more from a communications perspective, for people to, you know, be cheap and use both sides of your paper before you throw it away and reduce actually things even going in recycling.
Absolutely. From a climate change perspective or just an environmental impact perspective, you can have such a bigger impact if you focused on the reduce and the reuse component of it. Recycling is not the answer for the future. That the other two are huge. And I know Kate Walker's doing some really cool things in that space and has a lot of creative ideas. But I reciprocate and I say that needs to be a bigger focus, much bigger focus moving forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yeah, what you mentioned about contamination rate raised just a question for me. Just curious to know how the contract works. So if our contamination rate is four compared to like 12 to 20%, does that, and then also based on commodity prices of the recyclable?
Yeah.
Does that mean that the cost to the city for the recyclables could fluctuate based on the contamination coming through on a monthly basis as well as the shift in commodity prices? Or are we locked in for a year?
No, they, we redo the contamination rates every time we do what's called a sort or an audit of the material. And that one-time exercise sets the numbers. So every, so a month, usually that happens, and by contract, it's once a year at a minimum. And we were able to secure an on-demand model that we could do as we needed to. That, it happens very rarely because it's so expensive to shut the facility down and to run a quantity of material through the machines to actually measure your contamination. Once that's done, then they estimate, they extrapolate and use those numbers, that percentage of contamination in the future as your next month comes in, you have 40, 50 tons of material and they assume that all of those 50 tons have the same numbers that you had that one test run. So as often as you do that audit, that resets what your percentage mix is and that's used to calculate the checks. So that's, that does affect it, but it, but it only realistically happens at best once a year. We wanted to get more of that.
I'm just saying, is it conceivable that if we implemented policies where we lowered the contamination rate and encouraged people to put more recyclables in there that traded at a higher commodity price, that we could ultimately drive down our cost on a month-to-month basis? Or am I, or are we talking like incremental?
Incremental.
I'm just looking to make money in the process for the city.
Here's the way that you could do it. If you looked at the way the revenue is calculated, we're currently in a glass included model. Glass is very difficult to recycle. It's effectively a residue. As with the process, it's not, the processor doesn't want this. There's another line in the cost structure that gives us, it changes the tip fee. So right now, the way the thing is set up is it's a $69 a ton fee to run a ton of materials through the machines. It would drop to I think like 59 or in the mid 50s per ton. So you get, you get a lower cost to run your recyclables through the facility and you have cleaner recycling at the end without glass in it. So if you were really looking to maximize the economics of recycling, the one thing that you could do right now would be to remove glass from the included mix of recyclables. That has negative impacts too. If what you're measuring, we currently, we say that we're the number one recycler in the state of Virginia and that's based on tonnage. And glass is one of the heavier things that's in your green carts. If you actually took that out, one of the downsides would be you would be reporting and if.
And you're also knowingly throwing a whole bunch of glass containers into a landfill.
Yeah, now to Dan's point, there is a magic machine. This Fairfax County built a glass crushing machine to recycle.
Is that why you left?
I was like, they built it, now I must go. It, it's there, it exists at their I-95 facility. The problem is it has to be perfectly clean incoming glass. It can't be crushed residual mixed with shredded paper, bits of orange juice and milk for, out of the back of the recycling processing facility. So it's how do you separate that? The only way to do that, we were envisioning a separate collection container at the recycling center and then some creative marketing with some of the restaurant community here.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, just to answer your question, incremental changes wouldn't make a big difference in the way that it worked. But if you were to target glass, you would have some pretty significant financial changes to the system in a positive way.
All right, that's something to chew on. Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks for.
Of course, that would mean that when you open that, that, after you finish that jar of Newman's spaghetti sauce, you would need to wash the metal cap and put it one place. You would need to rinse out the glass container itself. Now, do you have to take the label off also?
No, and you wouldn't have to take the cap off. The way I've seen that machine work is it's, yeah, the cap is going to be discarded as part of the crushing process.
You just need to eat all the Paul Newman's spaghetti sauce.
Finish your spaghetti and your beer and your wine and all of these, these separate things.
So city manager, I would say that we need to have a following conversation with Mr. McGow when he becomes Deputy Director of Solid Waste in six months' time and persuade him to take off all of our glass. And bring it back to us in smoother streets that we're going to use for paving.
Yeah, that's right. It's a workable idea and it's now. So it is, it's a very valid discussion to have with different pros and cons.
All right, is there anything else? Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Mr. Snyder?
I did have a question about number four consent item. Could the city manager explain more what these contracts are for, what they do?
Why don't I invite Mr. Whitfield to speak to that? This is, this is taking advantage of a code change that we made about six months ago to allow us to ride Fairfax County contract. I guess we need to take this off consent as well.
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and, well, let's bang out the first one maybe if we can and then we'll move on to this one. So do we have a motion regarding the first item?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager, on behalf of the city, to sign agreements with the American Disposal Services Incorporated for A, solid waste collection and hauling services, and B, processing and sale of recyclables to expend up to $600,000 per fiscal year and to renew contract A for five additional one-year terms and contract B for three additional one-year terms, subject to appropriation of funds by city council and the budget.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, let's move on. Welcome back.
Thank you.
What say you?
So the jock contracts, those are, some of the items that we use on that are for facilities. The majority of them that we do use are facilities. Could be used on some of the facility grounds as well. These contracts allow us to do a lot of miscellaneous projects. And so what we wanted to do is we wanted to get more than just one of these contracts. So this will give us the capability of having at least three of these that we can choose from. They all have a diversity of the type of work that they perform. And so depending on what their schedule is, we'll be able to get the work done and accomplished in a timely manner. And we have set pricing on these things. And since we have the good pricing on these, then we can kind of pick and choose who's the best one to actually perform that type work. So I don't know if you have any specific questions on the contracts?
Yeah, just an illustration for the taxpayers as to what these contracts are for. What do they do?
For instance, we did the fueling station out at the property yard. That was done under a similar type of contract. And so when we have a small project that we want performed, so for instance, if it's inside of a facility and we wanted to build some additional offices or walls, or if we wanted to do some electrical work, we could actually hire some of these contractors to perform some of this type of work. So it's very in nature. We could even have some site work if we decided we wanted to go back and add new charging stations for vehicles at another location. We could hire them to do that type of work as well. So the work is very diverse. It's not specific to any particular type of trade. So with these type contracts, we don't have to go out consistently and do IFBs. We already have them under contract. All we have to do is call them up, give us an estimate. This is the scope of the work.
Some other examples of things that come up, you know, when a citizen asks for ADA ramp, you know, some concrete work. This allows us to use these contractors to go and do that work without bidding that out separately. I think we used a similar contract for some of the work at the downtown plaza where we were, you know, we put in the new sidewalk there. That, that's the type of tasks that this type of contracting would allow us to do. All of the work that is done is subject to appropriation by the city council. So these are either going to be grant-funded projects or projects that are listed in the budget.
Okay, so the management of the project comes through that. What we're doing is basically approving some vehicles.
The council oversight will come through the appropriation process.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, any other comments, questions? Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Do we have a motion regarding this item?
Mayor, I move approval of all consent items remaining numbered one, two.
This one was off consent for that discussion, so this one's an individual one.
Oh. Okay, in that case, I move to authorize the city manager, on behalf of the city, to sign agreements with Brown Industrial Services, LLC, Centennial Contractors Enterprises, Inc., and the Matthews Group for job order contracting services to expend up to $1 million per fiscal year under each contract and renew these contracts for five additional one-year terms, subject to appropriation of funds.
All right, all right. We have a second. I'm going to call for public comment. I may have done it already. But anyone wish to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, do we have anything else to take off the consent agenda or should we make a motion regarding?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of items remaining on the consent agenda.
All right, do we have a second? Did someone second it?
Yes.
Mr. Z, all right. Again, any member of the public wish to speak to these items? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lickenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, how about business not on the agenda? Is there anything not on the agenda people would like to speak to?
Mr. Mayor, just very quickly, I wondered if staff could report back to us in a future meeting on the effects of the governmental shutdown on city revenues and what the city can do to be supportive of our citizens or federal employees. So if I could sort of have a report on those things in the future, it'd be great. Thank you very much.
All right, Vice Mayor Conley?
Following what Mr. Snyder just said, there was an article in the Washington Post today about challenges to metro because of the shutdown and concern that some of that might get passed on to localities was actually written in the article. So I think it would be good if we kept an eye on that as well as we go into our own budget.
All right, anything else? Any standing regional committee or council liaison reports? Ms. Hardy?
Mayor, I had a request. I know that we've talked about the exotic animal ordinance. I just wanted to note that Fairfax County is taking this up at the end of the month with a lot of public comment, I think, taken from both the citizens as well as pro-animal side. So I just want to see whether we could schedule a discussion for us in February, following Fairfax County's lead and see kind of where they come out.
All right, other, any requests, any other, any council reports or committee reports? Any other, any council reports or committee reports, regional committee reports?
Just tomorrow night, a reminder that Fairfax is holding its briefing on the West Falls Church development under their control and interest, 7:00 at the Grad Center.
All right. Anything else? Any council member comments? Okay, we have minutes. Eglie Duncan, any comments to the minutes?
Don Byers having a town hall also on Thursday, the 17th, at Yorktown High School, 7:00 if anybody's interested in that. Minutes, I haven't had a chance to look at them. Minutes, September 11, 2017, line 98. It is Stuart Schwartz, executive director of Colision for Smarter Growth, not Smaller Growth. And line 62, founders row, should be plural, founders. And does anybody else have anything else? All right, with those corrections, I move approval of the minutes of September 11, 2017.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstentions? All right. Now, moving on to the minutes of November 13, 2018.
Mr. Mayor, line 39. Not sidewalks, but sidewalks. And with that, line 140, let's see what that is. Citizens, plural. Those corrections, move approval of the minutes of November 13, 2018.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstentions? The ayes have it. Moving on, November 19, 2018.
Mr. Mayor, lines 52 to 55. Mr. Shields, I'm just not really sure I understand, I think there's an extra word there. The word noting not really needed. Discuss the land title and process and highlight the importance, I think is what it should say.
That's exactly what he did.
And Mayor Tarter said something, and there was no public comments, or there was, there were no public comments, or there was no public comment, but not both, one or the other. And with those corrections, move approval of the minutes of November 19, 2018.
Second.
Did you say I said something eloquently?
Stirring.
That's what I thought.
Inspiring, uplifting even.
That's what I thought. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstentions? The ayes have it. November 26, 2018.
Mr. Mayor, line 52 to 56. Mr. Lichtenhouse said something stirring. Oh, he requested "and" update, not "and" update. And line 55, we're eventually, by the time it opens, going to spell founders row the right way, because we do it every different way from loose. Founders, no apostrophe, plural. And Ms. Conley asked for something, a detailed spending numbers. No, she asked for detailed spending numbers. No, a. Those corrections, move approval of the minutes of November 26, 2018.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstentions? The ayes have it.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. And so now, we have the possibility of a closed session, and so I am going to read a motion and see if anyone's in favor of it. Upon a motion made by council member.
Conley.
And seconded by council member.
Hardy.
Hardy. And passed by a vote of city council, council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A29, discussion of the award of a public contract and the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the city, specifically terms of contracts for the campus project. Councilmember Conley?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?